Called in the north who drives. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening and today is February eighth, twenty sixteen.
Here it's your.
Here.
Here.
Coleman.
Here.
Basil.
Myer.
Here.
We have the minutes of January eleventh, twenty sixteen. Any corrections or additions? Is there a motion? Motion made in second. Questions in the motion? Roll call.
Here it's. Yes. Caporos.
Yes.
Whalen.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Basil.
Yes.
Is there anyone from the audience that wishes to address the floor?
I'd just like to take a minute in this section. I don't want to be everybody else to punch. We had an unfortunate incident about two weeks ago, our Doc's Drugs. And thereafter, there was apprehensions made. And I just want to, first of all, say that I'm very grateful, and I'm sure we're all very grateful, that no one got hurt. And also very grateful to everyone from the top to the bottom who worked on that case and was able to solve it. And on behalf of the citizens and the village board, we appreciate the efforts of the police departments.
Thank you.
The commissions, purification commission trustee here.
Nothing to report at this time.
Fourth of July commission trustee Coleman.
Yeah, next meeting is March first, and we'll be continuing discussion on the fourth of July vehicle. That's all I have.
Information trustee Coleman.
This coming weekend, Saturday, we got our Danny daughter dance. Pre-registration is required, there's information on our Facebook page and that.
It's still to you here?
Yes, it's still to you here, I sixty.
River of Hope trustee vision.
There has been some updates on that. The, the original bid on it, it went up to over nine thousand dollars. So they're looking local, and it looks like we're going to be able to save a lot of money and be able to create a ribbon and get, get it started maybe this spring.
Thank you. The treasurer's report. Historic preservation.
Next meeting is February sixteenth at ten a.m. down at the, the museum.
Sorry about that. First to your turn.
Treasurer's report?
There wasn't a lot of activity in January. We did make a payment on some of the work for the water main. And we had good collections in our water bills. The other major change on the account balances is the fourth of July where they reserved entertainment for one of the figures that, that it performs for the four. And that was that. Our totals are lower than last month, but if you look at our, at the graph that's attached, you can see that we're a good two hundred thousand more than we were in the same spot last year at this, at this time. This is historically our, one of our lowest periods of the year. But we're still standing at one million seven sixty-two, seven eighty-six.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the treasurer's report and report a financial activity for prior month.
Motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
There is a second, any questions to motion? Roll call.
Myer.
Yes.
Basil.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Whalen.
Yes.
Caporos.
Yes.
Here it's.
Variance reports are enclosed for your reading. And then the, for the bills, there are a few additions.
Not too many.
Not too many, yeah. Becker's Automotive, four sixty-two eighty-six. Fireman's Park Combat Bill, three fourteen twelve. Well number four, seven oh one eighty-four. Creedase Hardware, eighty-nine ninety-six. HD Water Works, six thirteen twenty-four. And that's about it. I would like to make a motion to approve the January bills totaling eighty-two thousand five hundred and seventy-four dollars and fifty cents.
Second.
Motion on the floor, there was a second, any questions to motion? Roll call.
Here it's.
Yes.
Caporos.
Yes.
Whalen.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Basil.
Yes.
Myer. For the sales tax referendum, the newsletter was prepared and mailed out to the residents, or will be mailed actually coming this next week maybe. Do we have a date that that's going to be mailed?
Mid-February.
Mid-February. And a copy will be distributed at the meeting, I think we've already seen that. Trustee Caporos will report on the results of the presentation to the Chamber of Commerce.
It went well. Me and Bob were there and, you know, there was a few good questions that were asked. Other than that, I mean, everybody understood where we're coming from and they, there really wasn't any questions as to how or why, I mean, everyone kind of understood what the options were and as we kind of laid them out in that information sheet that's going to be mailed to the residents and we'll see how it goes, so. But just to tell from their faces and the questions they asked and that, I mean, they understood where we're coming from and why it's needed and it really wasn't any griping at all about it, so. All in all, it went really well. If what information is out there already, at a resident's meeting, and understood, understood which would be the better route to go in their mind, so apparently what you're doing is, is working.
Consider a resolution of participation in the Illinois Surplus Property Program. Our five-year agreement expired January first, and we have to renew, and this requires a resolution from the village board. We're doing this at this meeting since we're expired and there are items the police department wishes to acquire.
It's resolution twenty sixteen dash one.
So I make a motion to, so resolution number twenty sixteen dash one, which is a resolution of participation in the Illinois Surplus Property Program.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor and a second, any questions in motion? Roll call.
Myer.
Yes.
Basil.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Whalen.
Yes.
Caporos. Yes.
Yes.
And I have Bob handling the next one.
Yeah, we had a, we opened a few bids last Wednesday morning at ten. I represented the villages at the meeting because the mayor had this budget. And the bid tab sheet is in the back of your packet. We had one, two, three, four, five qualified bids that we qualified at the meeting. We discussed the options and it was decided that each member go back to the governing boards and ask for their opinion as to what to do with these bids. There were some very good arguments, especially from the villagers' point of view, that we should go with the Relidine bid at nine point nine cents over low rack Opus. However, the Heritage FS bid on diesel fuel seemed to be pretty competitive as far as the school district goes, locking in that price for twelve months. A lot, a lot of pluses and minuses were discussed with the flat price versus the no bid. We did discuss briefly the fleet cards offered by Casey, I think is where it was. And in the back of the packet also, I did a memo to you guys, and hopefully you'll have a chance to read, as to how all these prices shake out. And as far as the village is concerned, it looks like the Relidine bid is the best. The hucks, but we're here tonight to discuss it and get points of view. Also in here is a report that Heritage FS supplied indicating that the fuel committee actually saved two thousand and ninety-five dollars and sixty-three cents with the flat pricing last year. But again, it's very difficult to verify what those daily low rack prices are every day. I mean, you can take a price in the morning and take one at night, and they're two different prices, so. It's very difficult to decipher all that information. But that's where we are, and basically the school boards, we need tonight to discuss what they think is best. The township board will probably do it by phone calls because they don't have a meeting. What the village board can discuss, these bids tonight decide. Personally, I think the Relidine bids is the way to go this time.
Question is, do you relate that bid the same price with gas and oil?
Yeah, it's nine point nine cents over the Opus price. And that's the price that you pay when it comes off the, the refiner.
And is it possible to, let's say, for instance, and I'm not saying we do this, just, it's just a question that comes to mind. Let's say you take fee soil, fee soil for gas and you take Heritage for diesel, or is it a package fee?
We bid it as a package.
So I thought.
Yeah.
What is the price of the rack? You know, we talk about rack, what, what?
Yeah, in, in the memo, the low rack price. I have to look, now, these prices change every day, Scott, so what we did is we took the day we opened the bids and we compared the low rack versus the flat versus what Casey's were charging us on that day for gasoline. And the Opus price on that Wednesday, which is probably lower now, was eighty-eight cents per gallon for the base price. Then you have to add in the nine point nine cents for the Relidine upcharge. There's some taxes that we have to pay, so the bottom line price of a gallon of gas on a D seven octane would be a dollar twenty-four a gallon. That was on Wednesday, it should be less now. Diesel gold, the base price on Wednesday was a dollar, a dollar four and seven tenths cents. Then you add in your Relidine upcharge and various taxes, and again, with the federal, we have to pay a highway tax on the diesel. So our cost per gallon would be a dollar forty-three for the diesel gold. Now, the intergovernmental fuel committee is also deciding we're going to have to drop its six cent surcharge down to four cents to build a decent balance. So those numbers can even come down a little more if the fuel committee drops its surcharge. Because we have a decent balance in the account.
Was there discussions in there?
Yes. If you have any minds, we have it on the agenda for the second.
Yeah, I mean, that's why I'd had to review here. So all we're doing is looking for guidance tonight, and this is may, maybe the way we do it in the future. Usually in the past, the fuel committee meets, they made, make a decision, make the recommendations to this board, and then we approve it since from the governing body per se. But in the future, I think we talk, from the discussions I've had with Bob, I said, to me, this is the way probably should have done in the future. And then we should hold contract price for thirty days or something like that, so that while the government bodies can take it back to their board and then put from their board, and then we can move from there, plus.
I see.
So hopefully next year we'll continue this process. So tonight, all we're doing is looking for input, what you guys think. Anyone? Go for it. All right, I've been one that's, every year, asked lots of questions about this. It's, it's a big dollar amount every year. Deserves a lot of attention. Every year I, I question our, our numbers that we're given to know whether or not we're actually saving money or losing money. You know, to this day right now, I mean, we consider looking at the spreadsheet and we can say that as a committee as a whole, between all the taxing bodies, that this fuel fund saved two thousand dollars, that's assuming we know what all these numbers are on the side, like Bob said. How they, how we got them, I mean, obviously it's coming from our supplier at the time. You know, they, when you look at this, you'll see that the, the unit price is at a dollar ninety, but all year we were paying two twenty-four. So they're showing you the unit price per gallon, which, when you go back to our contract, which isn't in here, that is the price per gallon minus all the taxes that we do have to pay. And the six cent fuel fee, intergovernmental fee, committee fee, and the under tank, underground storage tank fee. Now, now, what do these, my question is, you know, on the side, what do those numbers include? Is that the Opus price minus the nine cent upcharge that we would be getting, I mean, what are we really comparing it to? I, I don't know. I was a big one going into this, knowing it was coming, and, and brought up the fleet card. I don't think the fleet card is necessarily a terrible way to go pricing wise, I think it's, it's comparable. Casey's, I know, offers a five cent discount. I mean, basically what you're looking at, and this is just something that drives me nuts, knowing that all year we were paying two dollars and twenty-four cents a gallon. And pretty much all year, I'm driving by and I see a much cheaper price right there at the pumps. That pump includes a nineteen cent federal tax on there that we do not pay. So every time you drive by and you see that dollar fifty-four, and we're paying two twenty-four because of our contract that we locked into last year, you gotta take another nineteen cents off of that price you're seeing at the pump. Because there's a federal tax in there that we're exempt from. You know, so it's, with Casey's, I mean, I just drove by, you know, we're definitely under a buck fifty-nine, it was a dollar forty-eight. You know, you subtract nineteen cents, and you're down to a dollar thirty. Five cent discount on the fleet card, you're down to about a buck and a quarter or so, which is pretty close to where, you know, this, these prices said they were. You know, Bob said that was compared, Casey's was a dollar thirty-three. The day they did it, well, prices come down, so, so would that number of a dollar thirty-three. You'd probably be closer to what the Relidine is. I understand budgeting purposes, how it's easier, you know, you're going to pay per gallon. And I put, I mean, the price, the cost of doing business is the cost of doing business. It's cheaper to do it another way, but less convenient possibly for other taxing bodies. The other taxing bodies aren't my concern. Any one of our, any one of our pieces of equipment, as far as public works goes, could easily fit right into Casey's. Plenty of room to get in and out, plenty of room under the canopy for our vehicles. They sell diesel, they sell unleaded. Same thing with our police vehicles. Any one of our police vehicles could be there. I think at the same time, there's, there's an added sense of security in my mind as far as it being pumped. There's cameras right there, you know, who's using what card, when, and it's all right there. I believe Casey's had, would you say it was a three-day loop when I asked about that? I think you asked on that. And you ever have a question, I mean, then you can go back and, and you'll have video of who's pumping the gas. There's some good security measures there with how that could be handled. I don't know, I, it, until you actually know what you're comparing to, it's hard to do any detailed information. You know, and, and as of right now, I mean, the only thing I could find, and I went back and I tried to find it, and I tried to find it, and I tried to find it. The only site I could find that I think would be the most efficient way to tell whether we save money or not, is if we knew Opus were in town every single day for last year. The only place I could find it would do it was a website that charged, it was like a hundred dollar service to find that out. And they could give you the detailed price of our, of the gas stations in our town. It was through Gas Buddy for the entire year. You can go back one year, and they will give you the price of gas in your town at the pump every single day. And then you'd have to basically go there and say, okay, we gotta knock the, you know, basically twenty cents of tax off that's included on there that we would be exempt from. And then you'd have to plug it into these numbers versus what we paid on those days and come up with our, our, you know, my own analysis to know, but. I don't know, it's just my thoughts, I brought it up last year. I mean, we, we got our butts kicked on diesel on this contract. They say unleaded saved us money, I don't know how, paying two twenty-four a gallon, I mean, my memory for the past year is a lot more pricing, you know, seeing the, at the pump, under two twenty-four than over. So, and like I said, they're showing the unit price of dollar ninety-eight, but we're paying two twenty-four. So, that's my two cents. Couple things that we've discussed extensively is in the years past that we've been doing this. Number one, we invest money into the equipment that's there, so if we decide to go to the pump here, we have to factor that loss of money that we've already put into the system. The other thing that concerns me is, God forbid, if we ever get back into the shortage, gas shortage days, okay, that doesn't mean we're going to get gas at the pumps, so where will we get the gas from? Not to mention the fact that there's just no generators here, and the gas pumps in town, there's generators out there. So I'm not, I'm not necessarily fond of the idea of going to the gas pump. But because of those reasons, nothing's guaranteed, but one of the stipulations that we make with the companies is that if we need gas, we need gas, and you gotta get it to us. And they said they will. Now, granted, if you can't get gas in town, I would assume they couldn't get in town, but what we would do is, if in fact, I think the trucks were in Stager. The loaded trucks were in Stager, the depots in Stager. Bottom line is, we would take our power and we'd get that truck into town. There's always the unforeseen, where, God forbid, we can't get that truck in town. But I think we have more of a guarantee of getting gas that way. Did anybody ask out of curiosity sake on the video, if that video from the gas station would even be accessible to us? Because most times, they will not give it to us unless there's a subpoena. Anybody know? No, I bet it's good. I mean. It's possibly good, I, I just don't know. I was thinking, my, police come in and ask for it, but the idea of. Ain't that easy. Correct.
It involves, it's generally for their security, so if it involves a crime that they're reporting, they will give us video.
What if it's a criminal customers reporting?
That a customer's reporting in it, and they'd have to get a subpoena for that.
How long would that take?
Well, depends on the crime, it, you don't always get a subpoena, it, I mean, it depends on the severity of the crime and so forth. But I do not believe that there are cameras on the pumps. There's cameras that face out that way, but I, I don't think any of our gas stations have cameras on the pumps. They generally have the parking lot.
But anyways, they may give them to us, it's just a thought that I just thought of after the fact that, that I know in the past, it's been very difficult to get videos from a, from a business unless you have a doctor, you can do something with that. They can just volunteer us, in this case, I don't know. And then the other point I wanted to make was, was that, yes, in the years past, the gas has gone up and down, up and down, up and down, up and down. This year it went down, like John said, every year, every day, it goes down, it goes down, and it didn't spike this year. And now, if you listen to the news report tonight, they're bragging on how low gas prices are, but then they're also mentioning something about volatility on the market that, that shows a sign of the economy going bad, what that's going to do to fuel, I don't know.
We, we asked why the flat price is so high compared to current market. And the answer was, they're anticipating fuel prices that will. It's all.
If you look at the fee bid, that was much higher than, much lower rate, too. I would have thought they would have went up this year.
Yeah, and I.
Who wrong?
I like the low rack price. I know what John's saying with the fleet card, but I think there's still a marginal profit for Casey's in that fleet card about eight to nine cents a gallon. Because this one, at least on that day when we took the snapshot, we were at a buck twenty-four and Casey's was at a buck thirty-three. So whether that margin stays forever, who knows, I don't know.
Yeah, the same as there's a profit or margin for Relidine or Heritage FS or any of them that you look at, they're, they're not in business to do this stuff for free. But in, I know what you're saying there, I mean, but we do have a storage capacity. Here we, we do have a, how big is that tank, buddy? The day tank? What's that? The day tank? The two tanks that are out there? I think they're two five. Storage. They're two five hundred, aren't they? Thousands. Thousands? If we didn't have those for you. No, no, that we have. Oh, that we have at the shop? Storage, yeah. Yeah, they're two one hundred gallon tanks. Two one hundred gallon tanks. One's gas and one's diesel, I guess. Very much, when you take that into consideration, the whole. No, and I have a fifty-five gallon drum, and on the generators themselves, there are hundred gallon tanks. So you get it. Yeah, well, four in a sewer plant. Excuse me. The last time we lost days of power was an ice storm back in, it was three days of no power. And we've been fairly good that if we lose power, it's only been for hours, so, I mean, it doesn't happen that often, but it could. It's still, you know, taken into consideration. And then, then the other thing is, is that the, actually, that's a real. Any other thoughts? Any questions? Right, so you have any thoughts? Frank?
I think the fuel only could go up, I don't think it, I don't think it could keep going down, so.
Right.
Seems like every day is a gamble. I tend to agree with John, but who can guess? I don't know.
You?
Same thing I see with Ron and the rest of them.
I like the low rack price. I, I think we've been doing it for how many years? You know, the intergovernmental fuel. It's, it's been a long time.
Are you buying a daily, buying on the daily market?
Right.
Have you ever bought on the daily market before? How long ago?
The first five years we did the fuel system on low rack. And then the prices started going up, 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 and we couldn't budget, and we were locking in as prices were going up. And actually, we saved quite a bit of money those first few years, but now as prices go down, it seems like we're on the downside. I'd say we play with low rack until the prices get astronomical again, then we can lock in. You know, it's going to happen eventually, I'm sure. Yeah, not maybe not next year, but three, four years down the road, you're going to have, you know, accelerating gas prices.
The dollar twenty-four is your, is the best price on the lock that you got?
No, the dollar twenty-four would, would have been the price on Wednesday with the nine point nine surcharge by Relidine and our six cent surcharge as an intergovernmental committee. And we did that to compare it to what we would have paid on Casey's fleet card and what the flat price would have been. And all those, and all that analysis is in that report. And it's obvious to me that for the village, the cheapest way to go would have been the Relidine proposal. Now the question becomes reliability, and the chairman of our fuel committee is going to take a trip out to where they load these trucks to make sure that it's a reputable company. They are the largest oil supplier in the Chicago area, they have the South Suburban, not South Suburban, the Suburban purchasing cooperative bid for the Northwest Municipal Conference and UKH Mayor's and Managers, South Suburban Mayor's and Managers, and the local community. So they, they do supply fuel to a lot of communities.
Did Relidine give you a lot of price?
No. No.
The only one that gave us a lot of price is who we load you.
No, Feast and Heritage FS gave us a twelve month price. And then we had three additional bids on just, just the daily. We actually got five bids on daily rack and then an additional two bids on flat price. And Relidine's by, by far the lowest on the low rack. They were at point nine nine, Heritage FS was at point one thirteen cents. Hal Warren was at twenty-seven, twenty-seven cents, that's a, that's a misprint, it was twenty-seven cents. And twenty-seven and a half cents for the bulk fuels. Over low.
Do you have to sign into these contracts for a year, or can you go to the fixed price?
Don't you sign, you sign.
Yeah. So you're low rack the rest of the year?
Yeah, they're, they're basing their nine point nine cents on the number of gallons that were guaranteed by, of course.
Like I said, the best deal right now would be the Relidine, and if you want a Relidine, they don't even offer it for first person.
In other words, they don't want to play the market, they're, this is, we'll, we'll make our nine point nine cents a gallon delivered to your site. Will the price is three and a half dollars a gallon or fifty cents a gallon? Is there still a nine point nine cent?
Yeah, I mean, none of us are, you know, oil futurists, experts who would be on CNN, you know. I mean. When I got back, there's another meeting scheduled to take into consideration what the other governmental bodies said, which is on February.
Seventeenth. Seventeenth.
And but what I was told when I got back from my meeting and filled in, to me, it makes sense to go to Relidine. Like that's my thought. Okay? Any other discussion on that? Hey, John, why don't you take the uh, structural inspection?
Consider motion authorizing a structural inspection of the Penfield Street Bridge in the amount of three thousand dollars from Baxter and Woodman. Last inspection was completed in two thousand eight, um, at that time, the bridge was in good condition. With ex- with the exception of wing walls holding up the pedestrian bridges. We're now, there's been some changes to the program that we're in. I went through this and I went through emails with Bob going back a couple of years to back when we started this um, project. And even started discussing it and for life, we couldn't figure out why, knowing there was a reason why we left the bridge out, but. But why, you know, why we did it, couldn't quite remember. We went back through and basically it was a a money issue we were capped as to the size of the project. We did have someone look at it and based on the the size and stuff like that. Through Baxter and Woodman, we would have been okay. It was nothing that we had to do. The amount that the cap size for the projects has now been increased. If it needs be, we can get it in. So with that increase there, we, Bob, uh, got some numbers and it's three thousand dollars to enter bridge inspection. And it's a smart three thousand dollars to spend. Know that that bridge is structurally sound, um, not just that the size is okay and everything else to meet um, requirements. And then we could take it from there. I believe using your estimates, the time we're what.
About a half, about a half million?
I would say half, yeah, because we looked at two options, one replacing the entire structure. And the second one was actually just widening and pouring additional box covers on your side.
So, um, I mean, that that's all, you know, here and there. I mean, you gotta know what you're, structurally, what you're, what you're looking at there. Then we can decide if it's something we need to work into the, into the project, so. Deputy, so I'll make the motion to uh, contract Baxter and Woodman an amount of three thousand dollars for a structural inspection of the Penfield Street Bridge.
Motion for another second, any question, motion? Roll call.
Aaron?
Yes.
Capros?
Yes.
Whalen?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Meyer?
Excuse me, uh, years ago, when we talked about this, I always liked to believe that that brick had to be widened.
We thought so too, but.
I thought that's what helped the weight of the course of the brick.
Well, it did, but they they got an exemption, if I remember right.
Yeah.
And it was too narrow.
Well, we were, and then some of the things that took in a, that they took into consideration going back and reading my emails was that. Some of the things that we were concerned about was this, these projects through the county are are based on the scoring system. And the engineers went through it with us, the police department provided the engineers with the traffic study and accident reports on the bridge, into the bridge, so on and so forth. And um, at the time, including it would have actually hurt our score.
To get it qualified.
To get it qualified for this project. That, and the money issue, and we did have a check, you know, size wise, you know, width wise and everything else. It was good, it's tight, but it was beyond the minimums that, you know, would be required. But this, just this increase, I mean, they increased the cap of the projects by a million or a half million.
So maybe half of the total.
Half of the total.
Half of the total allotted for the town.
So, I mean, we, you you don't, if this needs to be done, it could easily fall into that cap.
Well, the other concern I had is if we invest two and a half million dollars in this road and find out the bridge is failing, we have to close the road, look like a bunch of idiots. Let's get a letter on file, even if it costs us three thousand, saying at this time, the bridge looked good. So we could show the residents, this was the information we had available to us at that time.
Here's why the board did it, they did.
Yes, and that that's why, it's it's our insurance policy that, yes, the bridge was inspected. And at that, at that time, when we made the decision to proceed without doing the bridge, the bridge was structurally sound.
So what happens if the bridge? If something does happen, huh? Do we go back to Baxter and Woodman and say, you know what, we're supposed to have a bridge that lasts another twenty years?
No, it's just covering for us, justifying the decision we're gonna be making now.
You know.
Uh, you could have an overweight piece of equipment go over the bridge. There was discussions as to whether or not a weight limit should be imposed, and I'm like, well, that's hard to do that. We've got school buses and fire tanker trucks going over there going to fire. I hope they know why you wanna put a weight restriction on it, but that'll all be looked at in the summer.
There's gonna be a disclaimer and there's gonna be order to certify.
Yeah.
You know, just like the other issues that we have to move back.
Chances are, the report's gonna come back that it's okay. And then we have to make a decision based on the information of the report. At least we'll have that on file if we decide not to do the bridge. At the time we made that decision, this is what the report said. I feel more comfortable about that.
Can they come back to us, can the state come back to us in five years from now and say, that bridge is waiting till now, it's gotta be replaced?
I don't believe so. No, only if, only if it's structurally deficient.
Yeah, as long as we're, as long as we qualify at the time that we're doing the project through, you know, all their qualifications. We meet them, they change them in the future, we're fine.
So. It's not going to be easy to widen the bridge because you have to do hydraulic studies. And get them approved by the Army Corps of Engineers that the widening of the bridge doesn't change the the rate of flow in the creek, the morphous size. And it's it's a nightmare engineering wise to get that bridge wide. It can be done, and plus fiber optics have to be moved, there's fiber optics that are just a couple of feet to the north of the main deck. So it would be a complicated removal, but it could be done. And it's gonna cost a lot of money.
Well, that's not a free.
And that's why, if we get a letter that says the bridge is good, we can show the public, based on the information we had at the time, we said, go on Penfield, the bridge is good. And that's what I wanna make sure. If it, if it comes back not good, then we're gonna have to make some tough decisions.
And it comes back not good, I mean, you have, you got some other decisions too. Gil was just asking, I mean, now you gotta look at Miller too. And if that comes back not good on Penfield, you got two that are identical.
Probably around the same time.
Yeah, so then you gotta, you could be looking at what you gotta do with Miller Street too, so. It is some three thousand, let's find out, you know?
But these are good questions.
Nothing else? Any old business? If not, a request for an, someone to make an executive, a motion to go in the executive session to discuss laying acquisition and personnel.
We'll move.
Motion, maybe, is there a second?
Second.
There's a second.
Did we go on that bridge? Did we go?
Uh, not the last one, check where we are.
Where is it?
Roll call.
Meyer?
Yes.
Basil?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes. Whalen? Yes.
Aaron? Yes.